On the side of work. That allow you. You know, see that's the deal. You know, down, send out. Alert messages. What happened? Thanks. See what that. If you didn't consider that situation that I was on board with. Really could pay them down to just that area. So that seems.
And and how is the information distributed?
It did. They had wanted to automatically allow, say, have that. And then we have to. Probably have to opt in for text messages.
We used to have something like.
Yeah, code red.
Well, this is the success.
And the price is right on this one. That one was getting very expensive and it was free. So it's a price we like.
Yeah, I've actually downloaded the app on the phone. Realizing so. You know, putting my address, like in town hall. And I don't want to be that. You know, if something's happening, those addresses, they're involved in this system, including, you know, they're aware. You know, they're not there. Well, once I can roll. Run it here or? You can sign up for it right now. We started everything.
Did they get that? The sponsor you covered for?
Yeah, I was couple weeks, like I was saying, that's a topic of a lot of, you know, we have that. Work system that goes along with the other stuff that's been posted there. It's another topic.
Should should we be, or have you been looking into making Wickham Hall or some other facilities a warming center? As we run it power outages?
Well, I think we can, obviously, you could. Address that when you. I think we're prepared to do that. I think that should be.
So how how do we make that happen?
I think we have to. We have to, probably whether. And then we. See if this. Upon solving that, we're going to pass the character calling in or. Then some sort of. Um, or maybe.
Did we do that last show article once?
Yes.
Look at this, yeah.
Or for information. You don't want to charge their phones, things like that.
Typically, we get more questions about it for opening one than people that actually attend it.
I know I always ask.
You always ask. And we're always thinking about it. So it is, you know, something Pam has graciously staffed many times now. And definitely has been used by some people, but it's not like we've got thirty people that want to come in. Which is good, but. It is something we're prepared to mobilize. Mobilize pretty quick. We'll go ten minute or five to ten minute ride over, so.
Do you foresee a chance that we would get to the point where we would make people aware that? This is an option? So so that they know that. Who who whom to call or that it is ordered?
And I can be in the back story. Well, that would be a, the alerts. We need to customize and send out our own messages. Just we've got to make people aware that they. You know, like cell phones are like. And they they don't have, they don't have that information. So if you thought into that, you'd be. You do for your job, that you can. Yes.
Well, we will do.
Yes.
We do usually advertise it on social media. A lot of times these are happening in off hours. It's not as easy to post on a website, but. Um, operate the social media remotely, so. That's usually how we try to word out there on that.
So do we need a motion on approval of that or is it consensus?
I think consensus is fine. And is it something on the board inside or you?
I think you can.
Go ahead and progress, you assign it.
Yes, for.
Emergency notification.
Oh, that puts it inside of that.
And consensus is. And authorize Mike this. Sign. Three out of three. I have a thousand. Job. Resume deals.
Thanks, Kevin. Mentioned it last week when Eric was in, but just. He gave you kudos, Kevin Brier, helping on the building transition.
Yeah, that you see the yellow pieces of paper, I mean, that's.
Yeah, we want it. Keep it going. That's right.
Damn, poor officer.
No changes. I'm excited.
But are you taking an compensation?
I am.
Have you all the ten bucks you said you were announced this year?
I do, yes.
Running a little behind based on our issues, so.
Well, if there's nothing else.
Got to save it when you need it, right?
You know, last year with all our help during the flooding, especially with messaging, she got she got pretty close to the budget that we also.
We want to keep you, so we want to make sure it's worth it.
I'm not going anywhere, so.
Questions for us?
We have the board of health.
I do.
So so collectively, the select board and the health officer act as the town board help.
Yeah, you're also the board of health. I don't know if you know that.
You did talk to me about that.
So when those health officers come in from health inspectors coming from key, you could stay long, basically, that's what you guys.
So I'm required to do a written most report for the board of health and. Um, I would say that my. Uh. Three top issues are announcing property maintenance and communication every year. I'd like to say that I'm solving it, but each situation is different, so it's not always the same solution. Or issues. As far as communication, um, I think. I'm going to also include that alert system on my website. Um, to let people know, this is mostly during COVID, like, I don't know that those clinics open or whatever. And I got, you know, expanding how I want to communicate. Think I have the town covered pretty well. There's always those folks who. You know, you can't reach because they don't have devices, they don't have the internet. Hopefully, posting around town off of that. You have any questions or?
How would you want to go compliance? With some of the wealthy families and issues we've had? Are they getting cleaned up?
I think so. I think the policy's. Been used a few times. Same time, I need to revamp the policy to include. Um, on the new lead laws. Especially when there's emergency children, small children. Um, scaling handle on that and perhaps updating that policy.
But it's becoming more and more of an issue.
Yeah. Two blood classes on that this year.
Do you find there's any directives coming from the state?
Okay. Laws of that. Um. You know, and if a child starts presenting with elevated blood levels, you know, you need to scale what issue and then straighten it with. More actually going on or. And when they're all. Um, four, three license things they have to do, they have a certain amount of time to do that. And the fourth is finding alternative housing for tenant law, those things are being done, so. They're really pushing.
Is there funding help?
I don't think so. Not that I know of. It's quite a science, I'm not sure.
Ends up. In addition to the. Putting it in a lock somewhere else, if you can find somewhere else. Uh, so it's a problem that we have, Keane has, Winchester, any of the towns with older homes.
Yeah. Any questions?
Okay. It was, uh, you talked about the property and. Working on it on an ordinance.
I did, and I wanted to back, um. I guess while setting up a time and pair and mention what I was talking about. Well, Michael would kind of get back to me and tell me. And where it's happening, and I was just wanting to bring it back to the table and see what we left off, whatever. It's, um. I've got the feeling, I'm muted now. It was pushing, you know. It's going on with that, right? And I kind of wanted to bring it back.
So this was about the anti-litterer, anti-dumping ordinance, right?
Right.
Sure.
It's usually Wednesdays from nine in the morning or so.
Yeah, but I.
But yes.
Wednesdays.
I knew. Senator Donovan Fenton.
I see. Thank you guys for having me. I appreciate it. Uh, yeah, you know, I have no agenda other than to be here. Uh, I'd rather listen to you folks, tell me about any concern you may have with responding. Love Swansea, I can work here. I've been here quite a bit of my life. So, uh, it's really more about. What I can do for you folks at state level, you know, hearing from families that are very helpful with planning, you know, kind of granting more money to get to that. Here are your pre-made concerns about housing, communication and maintenance. Yeah, you know, we have a massively aging infrastructure. Certainly that. Let's maybe becoming more and more prevalent in one of these houses, especially if we're renovating them. So, you know. Feel free to ask any questions, but also, you know, don't hold back on what you guys get up with or what you're interested in, you know. You can take, I don't want you to want me to sit here and do the sound station.
It might be helpful. To have a sense from yours to where your focus is. And. Your role in the Senate, with very particular categories that are of interest. Jay, for example, was very focused on education and appropriate opportunities for that. So I'd be just curious to know.
Absolutely. Don't go. I appreciate that. I, so I sit on the education and transportation committees. Um, and so the big focuses have an education for myself and Brad at the Keane High School. Um, so helping our teachers, helping them prepare their loans, things like that, those I've worked on in the past. Uh, and also, you know, we're talking about the flooding, a lot of what I worked on was farmer relief for that flooding. Uh, you know, it came down to kind of what you folks know me as going on in the district. That's kind of how I. I gave what I introduced as legislation. Jay was heavily focused on education, but. I take a different approach where I look at the problems that are basically us here in District Ten. And housing is the major one you talk about. Well, you know, I introduce a lot of exploration and. I'm trying to help our housing situation here, helping out these brown field sites, especially ones we have Keane that are dirty. And no one's touching them, um, great opportunities for affordable housing. Uh, it's something, you know, not really sexy, but, uh, culvers, you know, we talked about that flooding again, and it happened in North Carolina. We talked about these hundred-year floods that are now every year floods, every summer floods. And, you know, we haven't done deep dive into our overs here in New Hampshire, and a lot of towns are starting to see that, you know. They're going to be in trouble, these floods, especially the mountainous region where it happened, Swansea, you know, it all came down from, uh, those mountains, roads, I'd say mountain city. Uh, so, you know, infrastructure, you can force on what I did in the past year, uh, that farmer relief I mentioned. Uh, education broadband is another aspect I've been working on, trying to broaden to all of our communities. Jay not way local chart on that, we're just going to pay it up for him. You know, this coming session, um. You know, I don't know if you guys are following along, but revenues are way behind the state of New Hampshire. We're about thirty million dollars off our temper numbers, which is a very scary thing, especially because we have a lot of programs to fund and we're going to have. Uh, a lot more to fund this coming year, so. You know, we're talking about future legislation, we have to be really careful and, you know, we're through. The fiduciaries of our state, you know, not just a little nearly right in the champion, we have to be physically responsive, so. You know, we're taking a look at, you know, what revenues are going to look like this coming year in terms of what we can introduce, what we can fund, and we have to be really careful on that. I hope my other colleagues for that as well, so I hope you're right, so something to be aware of. Um, but, you know, and childcare was another big issue. I have three young children, childcare is outrageously expensive. Um, I've got a really good bills passed to help to get childcare situation in New Hampshire. You know, we're talking about building the workforce in New Hampshire. I think it comes down to, you know, having a roof over your head, strong path and childcare, strong schools. You know, that's how we try to move to our state, that's what makes our economy, you know, move. Took a long leash with that, though. I apologize, but, you know, that's kind of what my my focus has been on a personal current and I'll just keep that resolved.
What about other bills dealing with infrastructure improvements? Humanity or public water, public store. Is there any pending legislation or or directives?
Yes and no. Um, so in our budget this past year, we did the House of Champions program. Sixty million dollars for our housing, a grant program, things like that, water and sewer infrastructure for the towns. You know, we can, we can, uh, state and create a carrot for you guys, but also it's up to you guys to spend that money, you know. Find ourselves on local control, that's how we're here in this room, you know, so we can provide the funds, but I don't know how you guys want to. Use those funds, those tools, especially to sell anything and things like that, especially like staff. There is money available for construction in terms of water and sewer in that House of Champions program. I don't know if it's been allocated quite yet, but it was in our budget this past year.
Uh, there was a webinar, I think, last week that I had a conflict with, but I got it recorded. I don't have, just the problem we're on, but something I wrote down and asked that we would do it together. And talked to Steve Ford here. State about that as well, so he was presenting at Southwestern, uh, regional planners meeting last week. Last week, I think, as well, so it's definitely something on our agenda. I would appreciate it. And we've been able to invest in each month for the four thousand, uh, hundred, eight hundred forty thousand dollars. Some of which we've used and some of which is still. Uh, available to allocate.
As we do utilize it in a period of, well, it's. They help with the development.
Good, that's a, that's the purpose of mine.
And sometimes it can be to. To go into their general fund. We we chose.
But I mean, huge amount of money you guys.
Yeah. Do you foresee any directives from the state with regard to that civilian? But I think there was a bill that was proposed, having to do with minimum size lots based on the D S determination for sentencing system. I think it didn't. Uh, I mean, I think that.
Yes.
Um, I'm thinking like that's going to come back.
You know, you know. I really don't know what we have to do with the session, you know. You know, we're talking about, you know, lawn sizes, ADUs, things like that, those. Always come back up. And there was a discussion, that bill made it pretty far, except for two, the, the, the seven. You know, so. Yeah, the answer would be absolutely.
Yeah, the ADUs are tremendous.
Yeah.
It's only a lot of fantasy.
Yeah, you know, it's, um. You know, there's a lot of zoning in the state of New Hampshire that hasn't been updated for years. Longer than I thought, you know, so it's, uh.
They go down there.
Yes, you're either eventually, I feel like the state of H twenty four years, but that's kind of your. Um. Well, thank you. Three little kids. Uh, but sorry, I'm trying to find, uh. You know, but again, vocal control, uh, but the zoning aspects, you know, a lot of smaller towns, towns don't have the staff. To, uh, fix that zone at a time, who has a lot of money invested in H for changing the programs, like what helps? Is there anything I can, you guys this coming session, you know, so can I get real into?
Uh, one thing, which is probably not, not something you're going to solve overnight, but the, uh. I think we need to look at local welfare reform, the current system of. Go to your town hall and help you is not working. Well, it's getting against each other. I know Keane. Worked on legislation so that one town can't dump welfare clients on other towns, but. A lot of resources that people are needing in this housing. Prices, we've gotten, we're doing budget appointments, and you know, we have gotten to our welfare budget, but. It's, uh, it's continuing to increase based on, there's nowhere to put people. Um, so suddenly we're going to put up the hotels, as you know, a lot more on the key, but. People really need to, again, I don't know, it's something where you can advocate for a study commission or something to. Try to look at it, but I just feel like every town having their own local welfare administrator is trying to learn all the complicated resources that are out there.
Do you have a local, uh, welfare administrator?
We do.
Yes.
Maybe it'd be best to set up meetings with you and I and her, and have thought a little bit more about it.
Yeah, I think I know what you're referring to, um, in terms of when you send a transient individual to Keane. For how to correct.
Well, that was the legislation that was changed, uh, last year, but I'm just talking more broadly just about the current local, local welfare system.
I would agree. I think the welfare co needs. Okay, totally. Uh. But yeah, I'll take it over that. I love the welfare administrator, uh. Sometimes it may be well with others in the state, sometimes it's not, so it's too bad, that that communication. And to your point, you know, there's no housing, such a hate housing available, there's nothing, you know, uh, the vacancy rates, that was not existing, so it's. It it it, the ripple effect of that alone.
And the other thing, just to put on your radar, D P W DeRusso came in, which is good timing, but. Uh, we're trying to work through it administratively, but we have had some challenges with D S regarding wastewater, um. Certification issues. So we we contract with an operator right now to run our lagoon system in the heart of town. And so I won't, I won't get into all the details, but just make a plug. I don't know if you want to add anything, Joe.
No, I think, like I said, we'll see where things go and it may come, we may come back to you on it. Um, just in a nutshell, there's a serious shortage of wastewater operators out there and D S is making it harder and harder to. Have operators, our contractor that's working for the towns having some significant challenges and, uh. We're trying to work through it. I don't think the contractor is being treated fairly. Uh, we'll see where it goes at this point. But there is, there's a sig, there's a significant shortage across the state. I don't know what a lot of small towns are going to do and, uh. D S is definitely not making it easy for the towns.
Some divisions, some divisions have been.
Very helpful, yes, very helpful, but but not for licensing.
Same stuff, welfare and wastewater.
You know what? It's, uh, right up my ass, you know? You know, a lot of wastewater masks are pretty good. Um. Yeah, if you guys have anything else, so I I'm always available, you guys, if you need a phone call, email, doesn't bring my children to bed, anyone can reach out to me. Uh, so if you need something, you know, feel free to always contact me, uh.
Appreciate your support on the cover bridge legislation.
Great, awesome. I throughout driving through those, so.
While you're on D P S, you just keep in mind alteration of terrain permits. Which are, we brought that up with various gubernatorial candidates. It's such an excessive time period that it puts projects in jeopardy.
Alteration of terrain.
And if you guys ever think that you're not, you know, getting career angle on or anything like that, please. Reach out and get it to the state house.
Another one. Would be with regard to development projects. And I think this could could come from the state would be. Prior to. Was either thirteen or fourteen, if a project received zoning approval and site plan approval, it was basically grandfather. If I remember correctly, it would be sunset. Uh, so. Uh, so so you could get a permit at all, I mean, you get your approvals in all seven and not do anything until. Twenty twenty, and then the legislature changed that and they implemented. Law that it it essentially said that stated that moving forward. Uh, zoning boards, either approvals, planning, site plan approvals for the one year. And a developer had the opportunity to ask for one extension. It also created the system by which those older permits would would sunset, so they essentially went away. The main reason I brought up the A O T is that some of the permitting processes take so long at the state level that a site plan approval can expire. And so there there should be a mechanism in place. Of some sort that if the developer is actively moving forward and and they're. They're seeking their approvals and that. Those permits could extend or they should somehow be allowed to get additional extensions, because that's that's having a dampened effect on housing.
Are you doing that here in the?
We haven't seen it specifically in Swansea, but on some other projects. Uh, and we had a, they were cutting last week down. Marlins, and and it was discussed with some of the people from the Hampshire Housing. That that these, the delay permitting. Uh, by the state, in particular alteration of terrain, is causing the projects to to lose site plan, which affects funding. A myriad of other. Other aspects.
You got our governor, the old Zair.
He's, he's on his.
He's on his way out, so that's one song, right?
Yes, he is. Uh, but we.
That's how I appreciate it.
We we did share that with one of the candidates who was there. So and then another one, and this is just a general question, if you could. Just kind of put it. Under air, because it really directly impacts Swansea. We're we're struggling to to maintain a volunteer called Fire Department. And and part of the, from what I'm told, is that. The the call firefighters need to go through such an extensive training program. It's very similar or comparable to what a professional firefighter would need to go through. The people can't afford to invest the two hundred hours or their license needed. If, and I've been told that it's all coming from the state fire machine, which seems to me to be forcing communities into. A professional fire department. And 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 I'm not an expert on this, I'm just throwing it out there, because a slide would go much better than either. Uh, but it is definitely impacting our ability to recruit firefighters and and get them trained.
So would a, we're just hitting, it's else here now, so would a retired firefighter kind of go to the same with their training, must have retired, agent of police, then if they didn't, you know, the firefighters.
They they would, they would already have the train, they would, so what he's talking about is somebody new to the fire service. Firefighter walks a hundred eighty hours. E M Ps a hundred fifty or sixty hours. You know, just. SaaS can go off. Right off of some young people that might not have the time.
Anything young people, I think, you know, people want to be volunteer firefighters, especially the part time thing, to just help their communities. You're not the only community that's open to that. Uh, so.
Very much. I think it's your turn.
We can be all.
How do you go? Well, you can find it, you have to find it. You guys do anything else with? Uh, but like I said, um. If you need to reach out, I'm always available, phone, email, over at my window, uh, it's fine, come by a car. All different.
I did hear something this morning, had one to do with vehicle inspections of cars.
Yeah.
And if there was some legislation that had been positive, put the cars to not requiring. Uh, vehicle inspection for brand new cars, right off the line. I don't know whether this was specific to the time, right?
Never too weird. Well, the problem was, you know, people register their cars at different quarters, so there was no gauging. It was, it was law legislation, I understood the intent was law, because. There was no stickers involved, so people would be driving around in a brand new car without a state inspection sticker, so. Police officers, troopers would have no idea any of that, and they said, not a twenty twenty five, so we're going to two thousand twenty. And, you know, so we'd be putting a. Burden on our state troopers or or police force trying to figure out what cars, but there was just so many holes in the bill, um. But yeah, it did not.
I I I all wanted to recover, so I wouldn't qualify.
Well, you know, the system. Yeah, as you say, the most new cars, pretty much everything goes to. Yeah, as you say, most new cars, pretty much everything goes through. Uh but like I said, yeah, reach out to me if you need anything at all, I really appreciate it and give me time, it's. Maybe gonna.
Joe DeRusso.
Or go with the private verse and stuff.
Yeah, so he's got a, he's got a number of them around, it's kind of like the fire, it's a little different one, so first one is C P M or C M, which is. Uh cemetery maintenance, cemetery required maintenance. And there's not much change in there, the cost of fertilizer has gone up a little bit, so Mike and I raised that a little bit, not. We're fertilizing the fall field cemeteries, town hall, Wigglen Hall, parks, they answer, they're getting uh fertilized once in the spring and once in the fall. Adequate, um but it's definitely. Fertil化 comments to the se- especially the cemetery, the quality of grass, so that's just a sensitive cost of that. There's still some uh property maintenance and just to see some of the budget hasn't been touched, but there is still work down there this year um. Trying to work on putting up the large door and the film, um the staff, the. You know, complain that the door happens and that it's built narrow, so. We're going to plan to go up door in, there's a base scenario work to put in there, so the process of that, so not much has changed there. Not much has changed with D B W either, the increase is going to be um. The outside labor, just for doing normal projects, the outside labor rental from renting equipment, um renting a screener, the screen sand. The food for the next several years, we're not going to have to purchase road sand, so you'll see the road sand line, I went from ten thousand and zero. Uh but like I said, the outside labor and rental is a pretty. Uh the other reasonable part of the increase there is as we are upgrading these roads and adding more catch basins. And more drainage systems, that's more maintenance annually, which is pretty expensive for the back and front. In the spring, we go around and clean out those catch basins and expect them. So like, for examples, Southwood Justice Street project, West Street is probably. Total of eight to ten new catch bases that aren't on there, so that's a half a coordinating, uh so that does add to it. Uh and then the other is just the asphalt, the asphalt line, I think it's going up a bit. It's uh covers what we have set with the roads there here.
Going that way. It's not showing much to be in in the bargains.
Yes, a lot of it is, my numbers, I have, I have a couple of my flat up right now, a little flat, like my outside labor on hold or at this point. On the outside later, yes, well, um. All states not billed us for hardly anything yet, they won't, they've done quite a bit, they won't bill us for a little bit. Uh so that is all spoken for, so where are we on outside labor, we're original on twenty two versus twenty. Now, uh thirty three hundred dollars, approximately thirty three hundred dollar over in the red.
Thirty one to thirty four, three thousand, three hundred thirty four dollars over.
Yeah, close. Forty two.
No, all forty two.
Forty two, yeah, I I do think so, but it's one of those things, the more projects we take on. Uh it have to rent an excavator, have to rent a screener, there's just certain things you don't have to take with that, can't justify a purchase of there, so. There are a lot of bigger projects that you have achieved that require that uh. For example, Call of Hill, we need to put water up there, we need a fire for us to get, which sucks. Same with all of our new roads, so I think I'm comfortable with the forty two, I wouldn't turn down an extra, the more we saw on climb, but I would think I could manage it about. But it just comes down to, like I said, on which more asphalt is involved, for example, we're working on the grant to set aside the park on. Thirty two, uh at least we'll get to the church. And it's pretty minimal, but we'll we'll use it and need a a miniature excavator to go in there and do that work. And you know, that kind of fashion, but then not a lot of damage to the problem. That the back will just make forever, the other thing, uh like last week, I spent two days on that, girl myself. Uh ditching, really needed it uh with a with an excavator, five excavators, a rubber trap, and so it doesn't care the day. We could do with the back over, literally what I did in two days with the excavator, we're probably taking. Two weeks with the back, all of the paving spots, just the back is necessary, it's necessary. It's it's good for a lot of stuff, but not for doing long distance dishing in short amount of time, so stuff like that. That outside labor, which is a big angle, like street sweeping, patch base. That budget changes, we were at thirty three, we went to twenty eight, and we're back to forty two, yeah, it's a pretty um hard thing to predict.
Yeah, that's like to me, especially as the projects. Projects and equipment that we don't have, so that's why it's so. It's a lot, so it does make the time issue quick, we need to get the.
Be a little more flexible. You know, funded at a level of like thirty thousand a year. One year, it's twenty, you don't give back the ten. Next year, it's fifty.
So you know, you take that line and that that just that line.
Right now, at the end of the year, this is gone, I just get it. If it's in an expendable trust, it basically draws out of it. When he needs it, but in a year's light, the money still stays in there, the next year, you put in a lot of the same amount. They do no projects. Yeah, it's just a funding mechanism.
So you mentioned about the sand that we don't need it, because obviously you did that job over there and we. I'm all really good at that job.
Yeah, the D B W lot, uh as you know, we have passed, we log it off, but uh. We were able to trade the loan for, but excavation work, it basically costs a hundred, they weren't gonna fill us, but I wanted to invoice the show what took place, so they. So it was eighteen, three hundred twenty dollars for the loan they bought off us, and it was eighty five hundred dollars for the equipment, they're literally. So rough, anywhere from, depends when you're in the ground, how the sand goes, but there's anywhere from eight to ten. Twelve years of road sand there, and then there's gonna be more of it before we move to D W facility there, because the sites have been never graded, they have that more. So I will, I'm going to be screening in there this year, um. And we'll build a start pile of sand this year.
And that's what I wanted to ask you about, I mean, we'll take that out of there, but you wouldn't put the screen under that, will the screen costs will come out of rental and outside labor?
Yeah.
So we don't, because I was gonna suggest that we need that, at least that one screen, but.
Yeah, I know, I can just.
I zero that, add it to the outside labor.
It's for example, we get in there this year, I'm in pretty good shape with my budget all over on a couple items, I'm in pretty good shape with other items. Hence, I wanted to ball glad and the ball work in front of the sidewalk machine. Uh but we go in there and screen this year, I may go and screen enough sand in November for two or three years, depending on how how time goes. So I may not need a screener next year.
I just like to follow up with the slides, and well, that's been worked on, I I. I just, especially with what you just, you were just discussed, I think you leave the bump that forty two. Maybe maybe the fifty, that's, uh if if you do the D T F, that 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 throws it up, but if you don't do it. It just seems to me where you, you said you've allocated sand money into that number, you're gonna exceed that number this year anyway. Why, why set yourself up for that?
Or should you do what Jimmy was suggesting initially, keep the money in the sand mine, I got a question there.
Yeah, my suggestion was we just leave that line item and that's, that's, it's just due to the sand, so we just screen from that money. And then we give them this forty two, but then when our comments are forty two, screen. As he feels it's gonna be enough, but I was nervous of him renting that machine for the screening and. And especially with these kind of good thing lines, now they're two years ahead of. That's my concern for us.
And like I said, it's a important thing, I mean, that that could be cut down to just a bare minimum, but then it makes us, so that's all we're doing is a bare minimum, we're not doing the extra stuff and. Like I said, I hope it can be, you know, a map, we put on how bad that really was, and there are a lot of other roads that have that that need that and it's it's. Gives you the option, if you're bad, you're a politician, safer.
If you're called from someone that after you've finished the ditch, you can, but the moral order comes over. Was overheard in their property.
I was initially told the culvert's open, they were not open, it was bad, really bad, and um. The excavator I rented had all the turns, it was literally three hundred seventy degrees, that just made it so much. So much easier to do, but every floor going down that road was. And I had somebody that very patient, I I know the number, it was the name forty five, they kept calling me, following, you know, just during floods even. It was just, wasn't that it wasn't a priority, just for four highway guys and two cemetery guys, there's only so much people they've done, I kept telling them, patient, patient. We'll get out there and uh we did define a pit, so we've got a lot of positive comments out of that one. Way it goes faster, if you work out there for two days, the volume is for half a ton, half the road, enough speeds, they don't care if we had a flat, but we have. The flappers were whatever hill, we have them for contractors till December, so what do I use that, they don't care about flappers. They're just so trapped, it's unbelievable.
I imagine all these extra things that you do, Joe, on on this, it saves us money in the long run on damaging things and. It's for that maintenance, very what we're talking about, and I think that's very important. And it gives us our road is money that.
So yeah, everything else seems to be in pretty good shape.
I did have a question, uh with regard, just conceptually, not with money, but with with hire, what? You've got money in there, what what are we doing, and it's not working, so.
Yes, I've been, I've been talking, so this late year, I actually got emailed as I was sitting right there, so I'm not really fully prepared, I said I could not, but. I could, I decided that applicants that we had, um didn't really, really fit what we needed. And I didn't want to hire something just to hire somebody, uh so two contractors, I was giving all the time, providing you a quote somewhere. Providing, providing a flower truck for one flower, and uh both were really good, one's really good. Uh so I'll be coming back to the board uh to alleviate that for winter. Uh and then it's just gonna be, then you're returning the right person, I just don't want to hire somebody that's gonna be. I'll be able to help, so that everything happens, uh we're managed with one person being out, uh. Uh we, we're still managing pretty good, so we had a lot of things done. But that is more important, yeah, yeah, so so. Couple of items in the fire, just not ready, not quite there yet, uh but I think I'm really pleased, I think. Very cost effective, but not as it's time, but we got one truck. I'm taking on the body, it's a lot of pounding, more and more of that, and it's not as something that you can. Look at in the future, um.
With with the state, with the state staff, with their drop and uh and and flowers. Monthly fee to have that truck that can live down and um and that's. Our bridge time. Yeah, I think you mentioned one that, that when you look at the Thomas Swansea, you break, put it down to different routes. Three routes you have that that they, kind of swan team. And kind of strong, it's like seven or eight, seven or eight will be there, so.
Two hours of salt on. Snow, it depends if they're cleaning up or just making a pass, snow is on average about four. Four, like a lot of people don't understand, like so. Knock on the voice, I hope it keeps going, lately our storms have been starting, I started at like one, two o'clock in the morning, which is ideal, because you have nobody on the road at that point in time. We went to get a little bit of snow cover on the road before we saw, as we saw, bouncing snow cover on the road, it all bounces, not all, a good portion of it bounces off into the niche. You get a couple of inches of snow on the road, it falls and it falls and it stays in the place, like the state, the state has a policy that it's. They're allowed to leave three to three and a half inches of snow on the road. And they're just getting stretched in prior to their operation, so all that happens is that snow will start one, two o'clock in the morning. Who will come out salt at four, and depending on the snowstorm, if it's only gonna be a three inch, two to three inch snowstorm. They're not gonna plow right out when they saw it, so it's totally solid, so they're just gonna push the salt off the road and and plow. Uh so what usually happens to salt on, it's going to be a big storm in excess of that that. Two and a half to four inches, once it gets up to about three, three and a half inches to go out to a plow, and it's, it's. Little bit less than four, there's there's no cleanup, they're just making the intersection total, but but the storm is done, then it's clean everything up. Clean that with the staff that we have, we don't move the sidewalks in the storm, it's after the storm is done, then we go off the sidewalks, so it really hasn't, hasn't been a problem. Uh so it's so. The storm will be getting lately, it's usually one, two passes, but it's not like a big storm as years ago, we bought three, four months.
So we had a storm today, how many guys we have that go up without hiring, we have five groups, we have six group guys.
We're down guys, so that's where that higher trouble. We have a season of bad comes in the other time, then you just keep plowing, average forty hours of rain, it goes. So there'd be eight, eight out right now. So we got one person that plows all of our lot, the facility, uh. When they get done with the road roots, they help clean that stuff up, fire pump, the fire accesses and so forth. Then all that comes out in the storm, and all the roads are done, then you go back and meet it out, it's a big storm, we'll punch that hole in, but. Don't seem to get that much snow, I jinx myself, but.
So they're three nights, really in big trouble.
So yeah, I'm talking about. But yeah, and the and the one thing, they said that last year, I know, I know the beauty, the one thing I'll. Give accolades to the crew is they just go out and do it for years, they live for it, I mean, they live for it, they like, you call them, they're there, they're just waiting no matter what.
Sometimes they're there before you call them back.
Or calling you like, hey, we're gonna go, go yet, but yeah, so I'm confident we're all set for winter, I was really pleased, like I said, by the numbers, and you can look at it, it's uh. Pretty cost effective, we don't get a lot of snow, it's not gonna cause you a lot of money, uh come out, say, have a big winter, a lot of hours, it's uh I think, yeah. The rate of some time, forty hours an hour for for a travel and then go plow, which is pretty reasonable.
Their insurance?
Yeah, that's one thing I'm working on. I get to provide these in the whole climate, so their insurance, they're obviously not liable, if somebody, if somebody's been a soup over an icy growths and. Their insurance on their drive, they get some money.
So if I'm ready to discover renewal or reset, I'm.
Yeah, so I have to see what Ryman's is recommending for the for the. Sure, you already bought fifty three thousand dollars with the salt, you have it in there, so is that what we spent for the winter?
That would be. So we had a surplus from the year before, and then that number, obviously, that was what I calculated, it's important to be very comfortable with. Some of those funds are used to do the problem, the road. Yeah, so solve this, you look at the years before, I don't know if you have on the list, but it's. If there have been ebbs and flows, like in twenty twenty three, you can turn a hundred five thousand, you can do six and three. So it depends on the winter, but we had a surplus last year, we have enough of the bin right now, or a normal. The one percent, but we have enough to get some.
Yeah, just I think there was a lot of salt in there, and I looked, and it's like, wow, how how does that go? Yeah, just I think there was a lot of salt in there when I looked, and it's like, wow, how how does that go?
Oh, like, we get pretty far at the end of the whole.
So am I looking at double woods in there now, what do you put in there?
Yeah, half, I think it'll be half more once you start doing that.
Oh, wow.
I didn't read like that.
I'm really basic, this, we had shortages, this. To bring stock uh or whatever, and so.
And there were some winters where the big municipalities gave everyone fire and all, and it's all kind of just.
Yeah, there's there's a great setup when I come back, it's a great thing, when you make the best of that. About the years, so.
Before you guys top that, was it?
Yeah.
So it was. Salt costs something like this, I think I'm gonna drop a little bit of the share. But.
And they come around to the red top for those.
Dump trailers? They they hook the dump trailer and we'll talk about.
Yeah, you told me that.
They look there, they tear it down.
You gotta look there.
Yeah, they try to pull out the little. Dump trailers will tip over very easily when they're up in the air, so yeah, thankfully we caught it, not always gonna come over inside that thing.
So leaving for forty two, fifty five.
Forty one at that, the sands, yeah.
It was five last year.
As soon as that, I go with Billy's idea, and raise that thought to. Higher and take that, but I just think it's.
Some of the first of very, yeah.
Yeah, if you put it at fifty, if you leave away for projects for for other stuff.
You wanna eliminate that sand line item and just put it on the salt or something? That you said, it's two years. Put a sand and salt.
Yeah, I think it's nice to get sand, salt, apple, love.
I think we have that, I think we're separated, but.
I don't see a reason that has to be separated, but yeah. But I'm like, so what are you confident that we're not buying sand for a few a while?
Yeah.
People were concerned about is that you're you're right ahead of the forty two this year, and and that's what you got budgeted. I I'm not, uh like the five, it was.
Yeah, so I think.
Yeah, I read it off.
It was five and twenty four.
So it would be ten, no, I thought it was zero. Twenty thirty. And twenty three, so that would get you the fifty twenty year.
So the money is not gonna, there's money you're starting to do out there, one of the main things about the decision making healthy, it looks like. The more money I have, the more work it results in us getting stuff done.
So you wanna put it like, so I said, it's a salt budget, and you said, would you fund or?
I would just raise the the outside rental, and you could call the salt, fund the salt and sand. The event emergency or so.
So we didn't have, so maybe they could possibly just want, the vulnerable things combined, we tried to break some of the mountains, so it wasn't. Sand, sand and salt, twenty five thousand outside later, and just try to break some of the power. We go back to one, one point Josh, wanted something separate, uh shade rolls or something, he said, actually, let's put it back in, so, something to end the world, but. Uh that I think that was, I think that was part of the separation, whatever, so, because the salt, I assume, I think you're sure that was gonna be really done.
Now, calcium is another thing, it's kind of a, uh all ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And last.
Last year, well, plus, he didn't have to worry about putting calcium on, he did quite a good, but we had a lot of over stuff in last year.
Tell me about calcium, maybe you've served, what's the difference between that?
Well, it's two things, dust control, uh which this year, there's a lot of that, but one of the things I'm looking at, it's a double edge, so after you grade a road, and it's freshly graded. Spread calcium on, spread the road spread, uh and then water it in, and it makes the sort of road empowered, much harder, and it doesn't. Get potholes as well, and it doesn't, a road from, it doesn't erode from the heavy rains too much, the downside is when it will be raised. Brutal to try and pull it back up, or to break it back up, uh but it does, it just helps the integrity of the road, because. You lose so much aggravating here just dust, but you'll see that a road will be covered, you're gonna see a salt on it. Later on, here if the dust goes, you'll start seeing the havoc in all the dogs and that gravel.
That's what I use in my back, there's a, we're gone every night, yeah.
After they. Yeah, so those two things, dust control, but it also makes a hard service to hatch and the whole integrity of the road.
Is there any opportunity to work with maybe different methods to attract new hires?
Yeah, I can see what, yeah, and talk to her, and see maybe what's about to happen, whatever.
Seems like more and more is coming your way.
You need people who are certified license through, right, like the C B Ls and.
Yeah, they have C B Ls.
People that work with the. Not necessarily, well, right now, yes, right now, we have C B Ls, but but uh but not necessarily.
Video and and.
Angel wants a C B L video, it's not, and he was initially, it was going for you to keep the deadline, so we had to go to school. Uh it's not even, we've done a lot of training with him, but he's just one of those guys, he just doesn't feel old, he's comfortable, maybe someday pursue it again, but. I don't need to have a C B L, plows and non-C B L drug. Helps out, eager to help out road projects, eager to learn stuff, and really don't need to see out, this, right now, we we need the next person we hired, is that. Equipment operator experience and C B L, not just not just part of that. Well, interestingly, like you asked, I'll be interested as well to see how this goes with that. Excuse me, for contractor, this winter, the plow. Uh it's been a good success, I guess, for other towns, uh and.
We pay that monthly fee even though we don't have no stuff?
Yeah, it's kind of a retain. Uh one of the, one of the proposals, I put them on the two contract, and the two contractors, the board services, and Grayson Smith, both of your town, people that will work of all the time, comfortable with. And uh Grayson's proposal is pretty attractive, uh. But yeah, it's kind of a, for them to say that I'm gonna leave this hundred thousand dollar, seventy five thousand dollar truck dedicated to the town, it's kind of a retain. Uh his retainment was, because I believe he was more of his retainment, it's pretty well. Uh that that's a good path, right, either investigate a little more, and you get insurance questions to answer, and then I'll come back.
This is crazy, this is good.
Gordon gave one as well, that was good, but not quite as good as Grayson's, uh but I just need to have the insurance, the next step I need to do is see what Ryman's is. How long does we need to have them have for insurance, make sure they meet those needs, and then come to the board, make a recommendation, I don't wanna do that until I see what Ryman's requires for insurance, so I may go to them, and I can just.
Where where do the salaries? Sorry?
Salaries.
Where, so first, mine full time salary, uh where is it going on? The employees. I don't, I don't think you look down.
Oh, they weren't in the way, you know, they haven't got nothing to show you.
Oh, you you need a woman.
You need to do one, I do, no one, yeah.
Maybe on the back, I might go to that. I spent it on the back. All right, good. Certainly well, and we designed it.
He put the uh salaries and cracks ceiling ago.
It might, that's the funding for another employee, correct?
That's with the number, yeah, because we lost.
Well, I don't know, I lost one.
Oh, that's it, we're gonna be at.
Yeah, we find right, right?
Yep, we find out.
And that's basically half your increase.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, the the other side is small, but compared to the overall.
And your route, maybe your plan and all that, it's right on schedule?
Yeah, it's right on schedule, but it seems like each year we're able to do just a little bit more, depending on how asphalt prices come, and that's like. We have those numbers in there this year, there's a little bit of wiggle room, uh because you don't know what the asphalt price is gonna be like next year, but asphalt prices were pretty good this year. But no, we aren't, we aren't meeting our goal, and I've said it before, we never come up with a grant, there, there's like. Five or six roads that are in really bad shape, and we obviously. When you do them, the payment crews come in, you can't have, they won't, they'll charge it for each move, if you're gonna do one road here, one road there, so you. Kind of try to do our roads in groups, uh but there are, there are five, six roads out there that are really bad, so if I do have excess money left over, we'll do a maintenance shed, which will get them by a little bit. For example, West Street, West Street on the other side are kind of really bad, uh. Sugar Hill on Marsicle is really bad, there are sections of Marsicle that are really bad, so section of Wickham Road is really bad, uh we're actually gonna do some of that this year instead of, instead of a portion of that. It's a portion of that is in better shape, um and it doesn't get as much traffic, Wickham Road gets a lot of traffic, it's broken up, so we're we're in pretty good shape, ideally with the bucket brand. Um bang out those five or six roads that are really bad, Christian Hills on the list for next year, we scaled down, uh the work was a bill we had to. We scaled down on how much reconstruction is going to be done on uh on Christian Hill, for example, sidewalks are gonna remain the same, and those sidewalks don't stay open in the wintertime, because they're too. Small to plow sidewalk machine, but instead of going in and reconstructing the whole road, we're just gonna go in and mill out all the bad spots and repay that. It's a, it's real simple, money's just not there, but Christian Hill is one of those roads that's really bad, um.
Is there a way to work with the sidewalk committee?
They don't have, they don't have the funds, we're working with them, one of their targets, they're providing money for the North Winchester. And uh in California Street Drive, or one of their big priorities they have is extending the sidewalk down Hill Road Street. Down to, down to Pine and Crossing onto, and we we we're we're gonna do that and start on that in spring, we will likely, once again, rental equipment. We will likely go in there and do uh the excavation and preparation for it. Have some rough quotes from a concrete company, but we'll go and get an actor one until next year, what I'm hoping is maybe whoever's doing sidewalks, for the contractor on. Uh North Winchester and California Street will take this in addition, and maybe more cost effective to have something, something like that happen, but that is going to happen next year. But I, you can correct me wrong, I don't think they have the funds to do anything with uh with Christian Hill.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it is based on the sidewalks, but it's, it's because if you do the sidewalks, it makes the whole project more significant, it's not, it's not just the cost of replacing the sidewalk and becoming a bill. Realize that.
And then especially up there, when I'm talking a couple of driveways, you're you're talking about reconstructing all the driveways, even if you got ready to just put one sidewalk instead of the two. But you're, now you gotta reconstruct all the driveways, reconstruct the front lawns, it's.
They go to triple.
Yeah, and just, it's a bit of a real symptoms, like you've gotta come up with a different plan, because that's not going to work, they initially, they're very crowded, and I'm not sure Wes had initially worked on that. When I first started doing this job, that's when he told me, you gotta cut something, and. Looked at the amount of traffic, that was on Christian Hill, and that was the one that 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 sacrificed, because the amount of traffic, it's still be a good road, just, you're not gonna have punching sidewalks in the winter. Maybe something will pop up with grants, but that that's a big under, that would be a big undertaking, just because there's so many houses in such a close proximity, and it's redoing all of that.
Maybe if we run the water one, there are a town, we can do something like that.
I have one question, can you explain to me how overtime comes into effect, because the reason I ask that, by hiring this extra guy, could that go down?
No, because.
Because overtime is used a lot.
Yeah, there's not a lot of overtime, it's just a plow.
Plowing disasters.
I was wondering where overtime, but saying, you know, I know you have a schedule, and it's.
It's um. Five or six times a year, trees or flood damage.
Nine times, that's gotta go well.
Car accident, they'll call some, there's some sand, some barriers, uh obviously during the floods, there was a lot of it, uh but the majority of it is is snowplow, and there's, there's no way around that. And uh it, like I said, it's, we've been pretty good shape with it, we use it some, we're working with a contractor on a project, and we'll we'll all authorize something. If the contractor's working a nine, nine and a half hour day or something, um but it doesn't get used, it's a pretty small number, it doesn't get used that much, unless we have a really bad one.
What's driving the asphalt increase?
That's the amount we're doing. My list right in front.
We're planning to repave our forest have springs, the prospect.
And then Chris, and then Christian Hill.
No, I think Chris, I think Chris knows twenty six.
I thought Christian Hill was on C I P.
Alright, because we got North Winchester.
Would that be a different army because?
I think you got moved because of the bridge, yeah, it's not in the budget, right, but I think you got moved because of the bridge.
Yeah, on the C I P, I had so that listed.
One of, one of the ones, we had a schedule coming here, when?
Repaving is Forest Ave, Spring Street, Prospect, so it's just like a little more than overlay, but.
Yeah.
And then the reconstruction, go down, dig it all out, there's North Winchester Street with California Street.
That's the big one, right, not Winchester Street?
Yeah.
Maybe someday when I go with you, we can go around and we stow you all that.
Sure, we go, Forest Ave is in pretty bad shape, because there are a lot of jobs, but Forest Ave, long, it's in pretty bad shape, we've done some half stuff there. This, I mean, that's obviously for the residents, there beats up their cars and stuff, but it really takes a toll on plow, but then when the road is.
They came up to buy a Christmas tree, basically running across from North Winchester.
Oh, that's true, that holds true. Where you split off the tent, maybe come, no, it's a big cost.
Well, he he would be on that right of course.
Oh, okay, Pete shut those down then?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay, I agree. Never really get on that.
Is that gonna be part of the slideshow? The, with the additional work that's being done.
We try to be vague about which roads, because often we end up something, but we can say that, I think we usually include what we're planning to, I think it's one of the ones. Sometimes circumstances change, so we try to say it's all projected to them.
Yeah, so for example, Tap Road. E B S one, and some feel part of that Weather Hill project, wants some filtration swales, and. Some of the challenges we've had, we kind of got a agreement with them that we're not gonna do it this year, we'll look at doing in a good way to do it in the future. Uh so we were holding off on paving that, and then when I started looking at its condition compared to how bad Wickham Road was, we made that change.
Well, the two drivers are maybe, I mean, not maybe, one of them is a maybe, and the other is the paid, otherwise your budget's almost still.
Yeah.
We get the employee.
Yeah, like I said, there are a couple irons in the fire, if they work out correctly, we're not a better idea with those irons, we're gonna do one. On the file, because, because here's the other thing, Paul Bassett is the seasonal, that comes in and plows for us, and he runs that C B L, but uh each year, he's not sure what's coming back. He's starting to get up there in age, and he uh each year, he doesn't, he's like, I don't know, I can't promise you yet.
Except why you're thinking of the alternative from higher.
Well, I just think that even if I do hire somebody next, next year, if I do find somebody that always will lead, and I may still need a contractor again next year, so.
Someone gets injured again, the truck goes down, it's good to have options.
Yeah. So.
Sometimes do just that, I think that's putting your, all your eggs in one basket, but I think having the options, until we talk about going, so I think it's, it's good to hear as far as.
And that's something you come back to others, if you're gonna do with the prices of that, and tell us all about it and say.
Yeah, once, like I said, I gotta iron out a couple more things, especially the insurance, and I don't wanna come to you and say, well, I'll hire this person, and then they say, well, I can't meet those requirements, because I'm having a pretty.
Where are you gonna post that? I know the box set that payroll, which line items, I mean, for, I was like, when I filter.
Probably, yeah.
Create a flower in one.
I think, I think that would fall under the outside rental.
Cool, so increase that, I'm thinking of maybe, I installed sand and calcium.
I don't believe.
The increase again, it's gonna be fifty two, right?
That, that's what I was gonna.
Yeah, I think he'll start, I think that has to, anything, I'm not, what was that, because I.
Well, the other is. Right, either way, that's, either way, it's. Gonna get it. I I agree, I I like.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Mike, still looking for any answer?
Yeah, I got, yeah, you you ask, you try to, see if they'll answer you.
We're decreasing the outside level of ninety one item five to lot number.
Ten fifty two.
Fifty two.
And then I'm gonna put the sand up with the salt, and throw away with that line item and add sand to the salt line.
You can do away with the sand item?
Sand line, yeah.
And?
We're gonna add it to the salt, so sand and salt, that's the same.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, ready, boys?
Just for some reason, I stepped those out.
Oh, and that's what it's up to you then, but you.
George, I hope.
I can't see it, I go, I go, I under the sand, so. Uh, they don't give you a sitter like a fan. The B S and A cloud, uh software program is phenomenal, I I like it, it works really good. Yeah, but it's garbage in, garbage out, they're, they've been up to date quite a bit, getting stuff posted, so it's nice to be able to have. So it's nice to be able to have the same people that payroll, payroll, they're great. Those orders are great, so I can see that when that wasn't an effect, I can see even wanting to keep it. Click on it, find out exactly what goes, what's really easy to track. So yeah, but so, but the example with the asphalt, I'm just, there was a significant, we did a significant lot this year, the cobble bit, road winding and paving and drainage work, uh that's almost done, uh Allstate has a little bit more to do. Oliver Hill Road, we did the same thing, we eliminated the bad sections of the thoroughfare road, proofed and drained, paved it, we closed it, very happy. Uh portion of all fish, which is there, was graded, great time to pave, and then uh Tap Road. Uh one of the things to note about Oliver Hill, uh where Mike and I are working on it, a lot of people don't realize that the road that goes behind the postal office is actually the town road. The road that comes to the office thirty two is actually, you do it, something we all thought, Cold River Road, that's a, it's a better source than Eastman. So we're trying to make that road the town road. And Cold River will assume the back road that they're working on. Which they paved, which they, yeah, they they provide, so I've got roads in good shape now, yeah, they they provided, yeah, we paved them, but they dropped the asphalt. So one of the big rats from Massachusetts, you know, the man, he played, how hard, he knows of a plant, but couldn't understand what's coming from. When you saw, again, long story short, they donated two hundred tons of asphalt, and Allstate paid for that. Help offset some of the costs of the pavement, but if everything goes well, here that road will be blocked off and then cold rivers. So we got, given that we out there, when we were going over in soft roads, and you could sit there and watch those girls on cell phones flying forty miles an hour, crazy, payload going up the road, it's it's problematic.
And everything went right in our favor, the payload was there, doing these shit, Joe's like, look, look at the road.
So they're fully supportive of whatever we're gonna do, like, I think that's the deal, perfect road, I think that's the deal.
So laying out a new road.
You have to talk about one other thing, Mike.
Yeah, the only other thing was asking for optimization purchase and I don't know.
We still got more budgets to go with, we have got the sewer budget and the bridge budget. The bottom of page three is the bridge budget.
I don't even have a page sign. Yeah, can we get together all lines up?
We've covered bridge alarm, got zero somehow, but there's probably been creep through on five thousand.
It's gonna sleep, yeah, zero, it's, it needs to be that. Roll more sound starts working off.
Yeah, but just email us something.
Yeah, I saw that.
Five thousand.
What would have been the reason to put a lot of funding? See the three.
It must just been taken out.
Twenty three spent. Two lives spent, uh almost four thousand. And and we were budgeted twenty five hundred. And then we budgeted twenty five hundred again, so, which was something extraordinary in twenty three.
The twenty three activity is for the whole year, that's something, uh, certainly apparent. But regardless, yeah, I can, I can check and see if there was a money. But it's just better repair.
And most of the repairs this year took place through, they build uh the front company directly, and they they baked more so. I have one handy out here that I just received as well, I need their fund, our insurance, not really see. Uh although, so it's fall over there, they even paid correctly. Why the rest of the truck, I'll be like, yeah, maybe invoice, I'll have a check, and I call back with my contractor to make sure they got paid. You don't even get a bit of that?
No, I just.
Did you go right through the feedback? I called the, the truck company, explained, yeah, they did, they did a brick. I said, the contractors bought proposals for X amount of dollars.
They paid the contractor?
They said, so as the invoice will pay.
So the reason it's over at nine years, Win Street, which was our discount, the bumble, service at the time, uh billed us for like a whole year, Marabi or something, so if you look back the year before that, probably it was on there. So there was seventy hundred dollars. Should have put it to my ear, so I want to still go a little. But then on the camera, it's a pivot. That was West one. Oh, Robin, that. Better to say true because I know.
So guys, it's a question about the catch base and say, you say you believe that. Now, when we put them in, that'll build a system for the drainings, P E S is pushing filtering stormwater.
That's a big expense.
Oh, yes. And do you feel that every time we go to the catch base and we're gonna have to go that route?
Not necessarily, but the problem is the P E S provides these brands, and they provide us some on these projects.
And with that comes, we need to do what they're asking. For example, over at Wyver Hill, they wanted to put plastic tanks on the ground for filtering water and stuff, that the questions are asked. Uh how long does this signalize? What's the maintenance to it? How much is it gonna cost to replace it? And it was just, they're unknown to us, it's just unnecessary. So we kind of compromised and went with filtration, catch base, and I don't know the science behind it. Your filter and rainwater, mix the ground.
Confusing to know, yeah.
Unless it's salt and sand that filters down.
Cause it goes right up on river, all that drainage, right?
Yeah, they, some places, yes, some places, yes, but uh kind of hard to say no when you're providing money, something better, but but some of it is some of the, for the company doesn't do it.
Got it.
Yeah, this is very over, we're gonna pay. Basically, registration fee is for the state to cut down.
That's just the one time, we're gonna get.
Several years, once a year.
Uh.
Very true, so that's why I think.
They get a gamble, and it was a lot on that.
And expenses. And the last, real more substance of one is the door stuff, so the sewer budget is broken down into three sub-budgets. Turns on page five. Also, W W is uh West Swansea. N S K is North Swansea, Keating, Pasadena. So that's the market asset, Matthews Road, system goes thirty, and then back to. The last one, W W F, it's much. So separate ramps, etc., and now we're.
Yeah, this, it is, not much changes there.
Yeah, what are you going to include in? On W W, the West Swansea.
So what do you look at then?
Yeah, so the biggest one there, we increased the illegal professional services, meaning for uh underway to do. What is it quarterly reports, Joe, or just teleports?
Yeah, sampling.
Sampling.
That's required. So the, that one up, seven thousand?
Right.
Okay.
And next was the contracted operations, which are seventy, so plus the contract, and they've been adding weekends versus so large staff, definitely work out the licensing and stuff.
And is that what we're training, um Josh, hopefully next thing we go on work to get his license, but they are, well, hence the ways away, but yeah, Josh, Josh has his passed a test, but he's still away. Oh, yes, some of the challenges were happening. With D B S, they're being trained, Josh is being trained by W S O plus. D S is saying, W S O plus doesn't have certified operators, because they won't give them a multi-plant operator's endorsement. Uh they have, I looked at the formula, and they have medical staff to be able to get. And uh they won't get it, so they have attorney involved, and then we got ours, we look at it and kind of feel the same way. Yeah, they're not getting in fair shape. And we don't know where it's at, W S O plus doesn't know where it's at. Mike and I had a browser meeting with with D B S, and they're doing tests at times. Uh there's a father and son for saving licensing area, that definitely seemed to have an issue with W S O plus. Uh but for example, they they don't do compliance checks, but they came to do a surprise inspection on our plan. Uh and then they're telling us all about safety, and then they saw deficiencies, and Mike was quick to point out to them, well, you did this in okay, we never got a letter with these deficiencies, we're just learning about enough, this month, two, three months later, we asked for a meeting, and now you're telling me. Come on, you thought of. Went into a bubble today, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no kid could come, I, so yeah, so it's, we're hoping to work for them, but depending on how things go, it's I need the governor's office to follow up. Uh but if we lose W S O plus, there's.
Jimmy, you better start working on your license.
Yeah, you better work in license, there's, again, it's. You do it. For how possible, like I said, I talked to W S O plus, I'd be working on their license, I'd be looking to put a part-time operator, a part-time pound employee on it, to save us money on the weekends, uh if we can make it work with W S O plus. Now let's put it to the cheap capacity, oh, since it issues, that's licensed, it's, uh, it isn't that. Well, it isn't that, so there's potential for that to work out, uh, only part-time, not uh not full-time, but it would help us save a little money. But the big thing is up in the area now, it's the multi-plant force. And uh we're kind of don't know where it's going to go.
So we leave that one, illegal professional. Well, I guess you could overspend what you're asking for. You you anticipate, actually, it's gonna be different.
Some more. It's in broad that, like.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up, because I know we did look at what was.
The question is five, it's like fourteen. More like over nine thousand.
Yeah, we had a couple liner bills, five thousand, three thousand, I think we're.
You anticipate the last third of the year is gonna happen. There's none pending right now, that I'm aware of, legal or any of that.
But it weren't more, we had January, March, May, so there's probably been a small one in August, but.
There's a lot to the one of the biggest challenges of those slot plans is how old it is, a lot of equipment is on the way, and and then our P D A just, they warned me that, they said, they warned me that E P A is gonna make a harder, harder engagement for that. And in order to meet the requirements of the permit, it's gonna require upgrades of the plant, upgrades and so on. Door swans, pump stations and equipment, equipment. The assets up there are great, they're really knock on wood, no issues up there. Over here, West ones, you guys, Spring Street Pump Stations, something's gonna have to be done with it, uh. We'll go more when, when we're done with the planning side, as far as what recommendations, they, they're wanting to make.
Like adding a lagoon?
No, like replacing that pump station and then looking at different ways of treating the waste water, because it's almost maxed out. Where we're at.
It is if you want to, you want to. Go a couple things with this, yeah. But it's a, it'd be an additional cost. That should be. For the jazz, yeah, no, that's something back there. Yeah, that was fun.
That's a whole program, that's very, very helpful.
Sewer water, that's a major plan, so. We changed this line, you do not want any. Yeah, we'll look at that, some of the expenses related to pump, the spring treat, pump station issues and repairs there. Uh I think the building's up and good, doing, we've been doing, uh, C I P, one thing I need to do, I heard, uh, the board, the property supply facility here, but we're gonna do pump station, this year, haven't gotten that yet, that that is coming, but the ruse and such, we've been doing it, the facilities have just become C I P, I'll be going to the board at some point, it'll fall fast and gets back to work. The building that, where the half one gets discharged into the river, I don't know what the name exactly, but the building, the building's falling hard, it needs to be building like that. Rough estimate, just thinking it's gonna be somewhere in that then twenty thousand dollars, materials, it needs like a hot pot, and then Paul Bassett, we can look at it and get some materialists together, something that will really work for, but basically, just rebuild, re-roofed. And um that's, that's decent, that's actually here, but they'll help them see how to.
It's that small foundation with the roof right on top of it, and they got, you walk, you can walk in it, under the racks.
You walk on top of the.
The racks, so you see the water down, but.
Yeah.
And it come, it comes off a big, the big building, and then it goes down to that small.
The big building roof needs a little bit of maintenance uh to it. But the roof there is pretty.
But we put a roof on that small building, we didn't.
No, we did everything.
Oh, that's where I'm thinking.
Yeah, not sponsored, we did the pump station flash.
Yeah, you got your guys to that, okay.
The C I P, look, the C I P project are in pretty good shape.
So you fill in five thousand. And uh testing chemicals line six nine. If you stay on track. Everything's in space, it'll be a thirty six this year.
Did you get a lot of your chemicals in the summer? You treat, you you they're dealing with the path in the summer months, so that goes up. Uh I think we're gonna be in pretty good shape there.
Yeah, like in September, October, so far we don't expect a thousand, so I think it is.
This is a wetter timing, I think we live on the path, and I'm gonna start going in the spring, it's gonna be. So why not Swansea? Place water. We better cut down the uh contract operations, right, contract operations there? You're gonna.
Just say that one, north is down a little bit, west is up a lot, how we, how we post the inventory. I think they're kind of definitely aren't consuming them in the west.
North is our ones that we check in, that very, it's on wildlife, the hot spot, yeah. Yeah. Off is in pretty good shape.
Yeah, so not is basically just go some air and pumps the key, right?
Correct, yeah.
We don't have any treatment and uh, just the treatment is over again, that's the only thing we got.
So one of the things we'll look at is in the future, part of the study is, does it make sense to abandon this release of, like, and run a force made the high West Swansea and the key. We have, we have, before we own a four, you know, fill up this plant for there, it could easily pay there, and then. We have, we have before we own a portion of the field, uh, this is a plant for there, could easily pave it and then some. But it may be more cost effective to do that, than by operating the little.
So let me ask something, if we did that, would you go from there to the not Swansea outpost and then center, or we have a direct line from that one?
I think that's where the engineers come in. I I think he grows where he grow, be the way to go and then get a new water while you're in. Throughout the whole way, tied in, depending what you've done to the system. Be a pretty sustainable project, but. To update everything that ever going system into a major overall, it's, we don't know what, millions and billions.
I think Winchester, they're, they have treatment system on the buildings, but I think four or five million dollars.
See something what gonna be done with. I think, I, these are their drivers, raised by the store, which they want to. They handed us a boat guy, he's there, everything's great. And I agreed to do it without realizing. Yes, it's uh. Hopefully things go well, the contractors, for the most part, they they were great, they responded, we haven't any issues and um. Tell our company labor force early on to say they're fine, but yes, not like that.
So just tell me about spring, so what is that? Uh, when they, when they go down and the pump breaks down, then where does that go from there?
It just pumps, no, pumps up to a catch face and then it goes grabby the rest of the way.
It relaxes a lot of this off the hill.
Is that for the north or west?
Oh, so it goes to retreats, so lift station, it just.
Spring streets low and you get it up over the hill.
I get it, so it's just a lift station, keep, keep it moving. And then once you get up there, you get the gravity, take it to us.
It's a deep road, so.
Yes, well, you say you just did even over what?
Sorry, that's five years. But one of the long bridge that much.
Five years, five, six years, five, nine, most of Russia.
Every ten, every ten years, you you grow, especially something that's proud of the trust, every ten years you have to plan on it or something. But the key talked about it, we have, we have plenty of. Discussions, that's part of the thing, but we need to answer what, but he discussed that there were a lot of regional grants. For realizing, King was the one who brought it to our attention that would be interested in.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, yeah, they've got, that's a state way, I think a lot of flows. And let's face it, it's not, now that that much, they weren't developing, they're running out of rooms sold. That's what they're coming out with, Joe, but this is a region we're in, I don't know, soon the engineer said. I definitely know my experience, but when you look at it, it'd be more cost effective than than one and done. And to keep the object of the other structure, you're gonna dig up the road, you might as well do water on the other side of the road. Let's see the state provide grant. It's sewer along the behavior at the time, it brought numbers.
It'll be your chairman, Joe Simon. But the states.
Like say, for example, they were to look at, they wanna do something right away with the building, they would have to look at pre-treatment. That the engineer worked with them, look at pre-treatment facility before hospital. If you can't handle them. The poppers. And they keep trying to not play, not play the micro variations.
It is to be a month, it's the, it's the fosters and it's.
Right, yeah, we have a little bit, we have a little bit more room for flow. Flow, but we can't take any more flow, it's possible it should be over. But what's coming out soon is. We're treating the frost for us with a pad. I'm not sure exactly, but that creates metal issues, which we're not required to meet those requirements, but that's coming down. So the more you treat with a pad, the more issues you have with the metals. And once you have requirements, then you need to meet the limits of the metals, now you have enough, something else you don't.
So is that service coming up?
No, I think that's. That's supposed to be similar, maybe a little bit.
So we're gonna end up being.
So yes. We're gonna purchase that re-blower, the side lock machine, obviously may operate, but it's in good shape, I don't want to buy it out of that. We have, we have a real fortune here with uh. Equipment breakdown, with not, I mean, equipment breakdowns and vehicle repairs, we're doing very well with those. The lower deck goes right up front of the track, was signed off, it's uh, ninety-nine hundred dollars. Expected to go up to about ten-five, April, January first, Hawaii, Bearfield, tell me. But it's something that can be used for blowing leaves out of drainage swale, blowing leaves inside the cemetery. Cleaning sidewalks, cleaning roads prior to paving, drummers and stuff. Rail trails, yeah, definitely use it on the rail trail, but it's a real heavy U V blower.
You would also blow the snow.
Yeah, I showed you, yeah, yeah, we have both.
And it does a really good job.
Yeah, it's very heavy.
I mean, you aim that thing straight down, and then you go and it just. It would definitely be too much, it's a snow, it's a snow on it, and I watched it. Pretty, pretty cool machine, I think it would save a lot of money. We're in terror, lots of share.
And then like some like, obviously that, that. Study, the Swansea study, they were pushing the armor banking, which is riprap, so we're riprapping, we'll large force with swell on. East Shore Road right now, which had a lot of positive comments on. But try and keep that swell clear of debris, once you put the riprap in there, you can't dig, you can't dig it, so you have to blow it out and it would be guys. Two, three days with small leaf blowers to blow it out, so this would be simply driving it down once a twice a year and blowing it out, same as. Over on Matthews, we have a coal that floods the leaves, like every time we get everybody, you have to go out there manually. Get the leaves out of there, because all the leaves come off the hill and they flood up the old drainage swale. Flood up the culvert and the water goes over the road, it takes out the neighbor's driveway.
If we have to take that on the other end of Swansea, do you put on a trailer and then?
No, I think we move thirty miles. Yeah, it does thirty miles an hour, I think it moves right along. Yeah.
Traffic control, yeah, speed control.
Yeah, we drive that all the way to North Swansea to do the sidewalks up there, like right now it's doing roadside mowing. We'll leave it, we'll leave it at its last facility, we'll leave it in certain areas, house since we have permission. And and but yeah, it drives all around, like when they go out to do sidewalks, they drive. He's brown. Going to bring it to the trick or treating event, Brown Field, they're gonna clean it up on Friday.
He's gonna blow some kids around.
And they're gonna bring that down for the trick or treating event, stop that, looks agree with Louis, so.
Scott Patton that owns Swansea.
No, that works for me. Oh, Scott is a brother. Spends lots of time in the mow machine in the summer time. And that's worked out right by and on using, using a. A contractor to mow, anytime. You finish a project, you have three, four hours at the end of the day, if there's something to do, we put somebody in that mower and it goes out, it goes out mowing a week of bases. Anytime, we're just about done with everything for the year, we started a little early, so like some areas we hit a second time, but. Every, every drill in town that needs to get smogged.
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm hoping we were in the right pool, save time, energy and. And all that, so. I think it'd be a big asset for the town to own that, and especially the way we want to pay for anything on the budget. And the money isn't like we're adding this up and. I think it's a smart idea, I'd like to make the motion that we. Buy it.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye, aye. Things coming out here out there, budget.
Yes.
I've got a generator.
Yes, I was. We still don't know who, so there's a generator up on Mount Caesar that hop, that provides backup power for the police department. In the fire department, student here, system, the generator is. In bad, bad shape, uh, so. I think it, Tony Innes told me it was purchased by emergency management. I don't know, but it needs, it either needs, you can remember on there, Bruce, someone thousand dollars.
We talked to Bruce.
I did not talk to Bruce, I talked to Tom about it.
He might know.
Okay, uh.
If you need some information on that.
So, as part of our A N, we've been doing the generator, right now. Furnaces are being inspected, alarm systems, sprinkler systems, all that maintenance in the facilities is being done right now. Uh, Kenny electric, whenever, I don't know, members of my crew instructing all the generators, my crew's gonna do the oil changes, the increase checks. Kenny's gonna do the electrical and the things, and they found that that generator is in need of a lot of work. It's like approximately fifteen years old, I can't. That, that, the exact numbers, I don't forget, I can't remember, but uh. That's just the way his form combined it, it's either thirty.
Thirty-two hundred or sixty-five hundred. Either or.
Either or, those are the two, and I think the form just combined them. It's approximately fifteen years old or more, I can't really see. It's up to the board, um, like I said, it's. It's not operational right now, which is very important.
So if the generators replace. All in this sixty-five, all in sixty-five hundred.
Or we do those repairs, we're fifteen, it's a, nobody as far as I'm concerned, but. And uh. It's not operating right now. Not, this is a repeater up on the mountain. There's up on the top of the mountain, there's a repeater that makes it so the radios work. Uh, the, the radios and the cruisers and the fire, there's also a light, but I assume for the airport. There's a beacon light up there, so if you lose power right now, the repeater's down and that light's not working.
It's exciting.
What's the time span on something like this, if we said, okay, you can do it right away? Kenny's been real quick to respond with the town's, he's on stuff, so there hasn't, unless there was a supply issue.
Refunded from the emergency management facilities and equipment expendable trust fund.
I think though, probably moving forward, that generator should probably fall under either, either police supply. Or split it between the two.
Probably where it is, may only have one person who's in charge.
Yeah. Or they'd say they get an emergency management. Yeah.
So you're, you're, well, you're maintaining it.
I'm still, even though it's not like, I'm still doing the maintenance of the generators, the fire department, the police station, but all that I'm dealing with right now. It just where the money comes from is falling under laws.
These generators that you talked about, what we bought the generators, they don't have a. A plan of them coming up and maintaining them, the couple like, I was generator.
Yeah, I was.
I bought two, and I, and I was generator, because I every year.
Yeah.
Hooch, and they, they make sure it runs and they check everything.
Yeah, that's basically, sort of, Kenny Electric has been working with our crew, we've been doing a lot of the work ourselves. Kenny Electric helps us with the electrical end of things.
I see.
We had some issues with power's generator with um. Our annual inspections and then some of the work that they were proposing, the cost of it. So it's been, it's been working pretty good so far, but yeah, they, they generate all against factor at least once a year.
The bottom line is, we have to, we have to.
We have to do something.
The two options we got is repair it or buy a new, right? And it has to be done.
Yeah.
And, and you said that the old one is that we would repair is how old?
It was sold approximately fifteen years.
Yeah, so. I would imagine this is a no brand, right? We gotta just put a new one up, maybe the next twenties, eight hundred or whatever.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we invest in the new generator up on top of the hill.
Does just be the nine sixty-five hundred?
For eighty-five hundred.
I think it's coming out of the emergency management. Facilities and equipment expendable trust fund.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Forty-five thousand. We want a very brief, with this mentioned, Weber Hill, seems like we're going in a good direction.
Yeah, so we've got some good progress on that, now it's nature, it was, it will work out numbers live, so. I know we ran through the issue of the initial design and I expected amounts of water. And which we have that mitigated, uh. So when we contacted the board and services. They, we asked them, we, Mike and I and the engineers, is there something you could do differently with this to save money? Uh, because some of the funding, and, and so I. They came back that they thought they could build a. Blocker canyon wall, which is like the one that was already built on the other side. So they said they were gonna look into that. They did, and started some of the work with their, the trees, the foundation preparation, that can we found water issues. So they started looking into the block wall. The block wall company says it's not gonna work with your divisions. The block wall company also raised some concerns about the issue of the zapping. About, because of the water issues that they're experiencing. They come up with a second wall company called Strong, 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 Strong. It's essentially the same type of block wall, but the blocks are. Sizeable, one ton, can I drop a lot, they call it. They are overly confident, their system will work, it will not require any geo-grading. Engineer, our engineers are looking at, make sure that it's closer. Meet the industry specs, which they think it will, and now they're working on passing it out. Uh, if all goes well by Friday or Monday, we should have a change done and really like to pull back from the work.
With all the water that's there, we have the base.
We did, we did, we had to do a change in order and so we estimated out approximately. It would apply freedom unstable material and pride and touch wedge, we also put it under drain. Actually had a. A basin that's given to the town by from V R construction, they were finishing the project. They all got that, they all had some block three basins that they had, after this, I don't know, but. We want to claim those basins, they grabbed the permission, V O T, they put a new outlet, the bike, they want to cross south, we're gonna discharge it there. So the water, the problems, the solidness, the. Uh, but now it's just getting that side of that wall, it's a whole wall of that period behind it, without the O P. And uh, if you look, it sounds promising, it's gonna, of course, it's gonna be the number.
It's, we have a heavy use that you agree that that, that. Stabilizes the wall to the ground, but it would be, shouldn't be a lot more money, right?
So, these blocks are gonna cost more money, but these blocks are gonna require less of them, it's like sixteen hundred square feet versus ten thousand square feet. But with the other wall, you need so many feet of the geo-grading to go back into the plant. This wall, they don't, they say they don't need it. And we're just confirming that, and so we think it'll come out. If, if we use these big blocks, no other estimation that we might up out around here, the same area, right?
Yeah.
Or less.
Should you have to cut across that road, or do you just tack them up? You cut the road, the helmet under the road? So it, it connects to that basin in the bottom. Now the water will lead into that thing through the leg, and pour across the road.
Yeah, we have under drain going to the basin. And that holes in the basin, so water reaches in that basin, raises up and goes out the outlet bike. And that, our crew actually worked with board service, we cut down some of the costs and did that work together, to save on that. We could work that way, but.
So the only guy who's icy is that we're not gonna get any block at the town hall.
No, we're still gonna get block at the town hall, it's, may not be the second block, that's gonna get done this year, so. I actually sent him a note to the door guy. I had an outlet installed, but it'll be in that door in town hall. He just, you know, supply for a shit day. Soon as that door gets installed, we're gonna, hopefully the door should be done before we get a little later practical member. If it winds up being later practical, I'm going to go and make a lot of the party work, and be careful. I wanna get a point where you gotta move the ground overnight, it's very possible. So, very least the door that will go in, in that back wall will be fixed. The back container wall will be done, sure, town hall, but.
Because.
Oh, you, and the wall, even if it's the back wall, yeah. That's that's our data control.
And the special cost, bigger blocks, okay.
No, they're the uh the big estimator compared to the hot, just they are more expensive. And then the only other cost, additional cost, he's gonna pass that fence on. My opinion is a twenty foot rock, you have to take more than that on bicycle. We can saw, saw it well off the road and all, but it just is not.
Yeah, but it's gonna be. That wall isn't going all the way to the top. Twenty feet up, twenty feet down. So then you're gonna have the road, you're gonna have some growth.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have the road slow.
And then the fence, and the fence hook to the, so if they went over to the grass, that fence would. Yeah, that would be, that's.
You know, young teenage kids, they're gonna be out messing around and somebody falls, that's. Kind of like we did the dam, the initial design of the dam didn't have.
And I couldn't believe that. The day we blew the planes happened.
That's all folks out.
I had a lot of people come down and tell me that it was so good, we saw the lady that lives up there. Down and she said it was beautiful, they don't come there, just looking at it. I said, yeah, wait, what lights go on it, you light it up your thing? They changed colors of it. I still disagree with you, but uh you gotta have a point there.
No, no, a lot of that stuff already come over, you may have cleaned the rocks off the block. A lot of that stuff has come over, it's not going over.
It is going over the top?
It was, but it's not, the whole debris hat, yeah, it did, but then it went down from the water drop down, water's not coming over anything, so that's the, that's that was someone older. It didn't.
How much do we spend on this right? This year, sorry, surprise.
I can pull it out, I. Thousand?
Yeah. With all the emphasis that we have with the sidewalks and rail trail. Are we good? Would you be able to look at the trailer and go ahead and.
I don't. When it comes to the training, the personnel to run, it's a very good guy who does that every day, they're pretty good at.
Do it overnight.
Yeah, I don't think it's a property ability to do that.
It's still so comfortable.
Around fifteen thousand.
But yeah, I. Like, so you gotta train people and. Like, so we do, we have a fairly small crew. I can't, the fossil doing that, I have, as I said, some of the.
I think it was a good.
You can stay on the state road sometimes with the guy.
It's just interesting, there's so much being allocated now towards the recreation of walking in particular. Which is great.
Yeah, I. Chose lines, you like this.
Yeah, record department can straighten the roof.
For the rear turn, go on, question Matthew's road. Is that gonna happen?
For applying for.
Well, Joe, we tore your pot. I think you can come out when you want it.
Yeah, no, I'm pleased with this way it didn't go on, my research. See where, see where things go, so I sit at the sewer and then the staff and we'll see where things go, they're ready to give the winner. See what comes up in the spring.
We're gonna get no sun this year, that's a lot of.
The P W sewer. A lot of water.
Thank you.
We added this book off or something.
He put a nice ball post and Joe is saying a lot of that.
Well, when I go up and when I'll bend that, that. General doctor responded by the state, they they invested the state in time, so we can do it when they get that one. The courses, one six courses now. That are the grandest, that John designers don't want their life, but they're they're funded, most of it's funded by the state finances. I wonder if there's something. The little places are doing really well.
Good. There, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, we go.
We need to be here for Bruce to report.
So you got the money?
We said how?
Under seventy thousand.
Well, it's the other twelve.
What was your original? Three eighty nine? Fuck, three eighty nine was with a. Projected thirty percent reclamation of the deck. We already already had a reclaim like, basically got to do that.
Yeah, that was a lot.
Is it all cold river or did some of it get?
Cold river and all state. That all state paper. There there. Well, uh, no, because the line item that was in the. Very expensive, I already had all state data at our. Our contract wise. So he's famous one, third pod.
Have a no brain.
That's whole river, yeah, we just, the only one we paid were all safe and uh. And uh whole river.
Was five oh eight before this and not including. You didn't give the list for that?
The good news definitely be good for a long, long, be long on that need something, yeah.
Yeah, you put that to bed for a while.
And they did, yeah, they did some extra stuff first too, they went in and. Made some of the sidebar for splash, so the sidebar clouds wouldn't catch in. They actually, the owner Jim come down with the inspection and didn't like one of the edges, we did it all. So what? Yeah, we. We're gonna walk, I feel that need something, yeah.
You know, Joe, you say that, and I never realized, I had a guy at my restaurant that allowed me some talent, yeah. And he was going over a bridge and he woke up. On the hood of yesterday. It dug in, hit the edge of the bridge, he went through the windshield and woke up and covered with blood. And a guy came over and he was, he went right out to front. I'm gonna say my restaurant's all scarred last year and totally absurd, it just, he just hit that metal edge or something. And just stopped him when he landed. So those metal edges, I mean, they really mess you up. And they probably kill them on equipment, right? Kill it like that.
Clouding is sprayed when it warms up, trucks will, Vermont happened that last year. Truck dug in the ground and then truck rode it, the cloud stays where it is, the truck rides up over the cloud, kept so over there. It happens, the danger with the cloud.
Yeah, I never realized, I've never thought of that.
The initial estimate was the three eighty nine, including the asphalt and all and, yeah, so it did, the all the extra cost was. Those. The possible, those rust inhibitors we had in the car, I can't remember the term, but then it was just.
Electro.
Sixty more percent of the debt had been done, thirty six percent of that was the cost. It's been two hundred more thousand sacrificial stakes. But plus whatever.
So. No, initially did. Well, when we saw that we were that well over on the budget, the bridge, I looked at things and I saw the number they had quoted for asphalt, it was a signature. Yeah, I asked the general contractor if I could, if he was in agree, so we just use all state of favor, he said yes. Uh so we just all say the favor.
Let's make sure we get that off state invoice.
It's a hundred ton. So I told him that would be a separate invoice.
I don't know if I see it yet. So I saw one for sixty seven thousand September.
Yeah, that's nice. A hundred ton of asphalt, so it's gonna be somewhere around ten grand. Yeah.
Oh, only, that's, you know, I see, you think you've got to come under six.
That sounds like a lot.
I saw it's a little over two. That's right.
Yeah, he gave us worst case scenario. The seven chain. Yeah, quite many.
So where do you want the seventy five a week to come from? So you think we do a ten for maybe, or what's the same number, so we can sort of come back when we get that.
He gets, he was a hundred time. So.
What's a hundred time? Fifteen grand number.
Ninety, I said, times ninety four and all. Fighters and vocalizations.
Yeah, I was, well, I'd say fifteen grand, you don't wanna come back, but it's only ninety four and all.
Eighty five thousand, that's what we're looking to. Fund and the choices are. Municipal transportation. We haven't. Be accepted for some gain or investigation or given for. Just wanted to come out of the. Municipal transportation.
You know, that's a best.
Municipal transportation is probably the best.
The whole thing?
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't think it's worth splitting. The fee of funds we haven't accepted to be at at home, that would be okay too, though. They're gonna have trouble, have a kind of concern of paying the bill, they haven't accepted the funds, you know. It's probably important, however, but. At eighty five thousand? Should be executive, all the papers say aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Your meeting scheduled?
Well, I think we really have to stay the whole day of that election day, really?
Yeah, the, the.
I'm getting ready, yeah, I'm gonna be in Richmond campaign.
I'm now, right. I can't hold me sign and sign with you.
Hold the sign, you gotta do it inside.
You have a weekend to take shifts, I'll go out, hold the sign, you're doing a job.
I don't know, we'll see where the weather is.
Yeah, it's the day I stood that roads.
It was cold, wasn't it, Wendy?
Will this not feel bad for you out in the last year, he's.
Well, I don't care about it, that wind was a bitch, I think, wasn't it? Thank you, well, yeah.
I just stood behind you, so it's fine.
Yeah, you were right by everybody.
Well, what about that short meeting?
Eight seven?
Three. Get away. Back to beginning.
So what are you saying, we're not gonna have, we're gonna have a meeting on the thirteen?
We'll have a meeting on the the fifth, but not the sixth. For there.
Let's see, we'll do it every again the other time. And uh. Those are ten minutes on that one? We didn't show them the last time, so I'm not gonna call on them. I'm not gonna call any state, my main city, North Carolina, yeah. And we all move out, we all, it was on the course next. Yeah.
Thirteen, we we leave the part of recreation in town hall on the budget.
Is that what we have left on budgets? It's those three now?
The big ones and then. Might be the smaller, smaller ones or follow ups, but those are the big ones left. Twenty, just follow us, twenty seven? Great friend for David Ford Thanksgiving, but not you.
Second easy mark.
Give me, give me to do the election.
Or Wednesday's night. So when we follow up on the budget, that means we're gonna. Their line soon again, make sure we're having more footprints and then. Then we. We'll go down and we run that, we discuss, but. Let me share with you. Three and I should. So what's good, we're making a, well, we don't have to make the motion, you said, though.
The whole business. Something's older, it's been straight up, but we have been dealing with the quarter fishers on one benefit. We gave the preliminary agreement for even split up the, try the wireline, the. Now we could develop a place in town project, ten town project, we're three twenty one, we're almost a highway with. Full of town, a recent ban, seventy thousand. So if we wanted to afford. Officially authorize that and identify a funding source for seventy thousand. That's something. I think so, because still, always so. Hopefully not getting reported in that problem once and so. It would be promotion for seventy thousand. It's all the, that's his.
It wasn't a percentage, he gave us a number, there wasn't a, there's like three ways. It was gonna be this number for you, this number for us, we did not make a balance.
Just looking at presenting other expenses.
That's a good job.
The investment. So you did support while I was invested age.
Was a little. Up and down. Make a motion.
For seventy five.
It's happening, they're definitely gonna do it. I mean, it exists.
Well, let's move in the water.
Yeah.
It's been a little about. It's been interesting, well. Yeah, I think, I think they. Transfer. To the panel. Uh I think it just, because we're gonna wait some stuff and test it out.
Is this a moment that I could be spread out, one of my concerns and see that you guys. To me, I'm a little nervous about the. The guy that owns. Uh that he's the guy that's hiring. The people that are in the water mine, and the reason being, I say it says. Think about. Him, he's gonna wanna get this done. As reasonable as he can, right, not thinking of. What's gonna happen in the future, you know? Who's gonna cover that, it's gonna be you guys, right?
That's why we want. Somebody like Larry Crowder to be our engineer on the site.
Oh.
Just. His his role, their conversation is super technical, why?
But.
No, just the conversation.
I get it, I get it. Okay, so my concern is a lot of them. Is that, you know, I just wanna be careful that we're gonna get this. He isn't gonna be the guy that's gonna say, listen, we're just saying. You know, as cheap as I can, cause that ain't gonna be my responsibility afterwards when breaks.
I hear you, but we did give the engineer the construction standards, so we don't. But if anybody has to come, whether it's in the road or it's, you know, in the road.
Well, I'll be comfortable if you guys. Well, I'll be comfortable, if you guys, it's like you said, and you guys are gonna be the one, it's gonna maintain.
So, it's the thing, if it doesn't.
How is, so you have to protect Swansea?
If it doesn't meet our spec, we don't accept it.
Yeah.
And then we don't pay. We don't accept it, that's the UK at the end.
That's awesome. We just, I would have done it, I hadn't asked, cause I was thinking about it.
Good question.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I'm happy now, that makes it real.
Do we know that this runs in? Right on the line. It goes past this driveway. But. I actually use it on the other. You don't want it to end in the driveway.
What is, what is our seventy five thousand? What, what, where is it at?
Where, where is now the seventy five thousand? On the board, by the town property, or? No, just, yeah, his property, but. The plans I saw was just past this driveway. In that, that block. He's gonna have a hydrant, of, or the previous form of this. That we have to figure out from there. So should we find out what that cost is before we? It's up to you, if you think it's getting very close and good enough, or if you wanna try to do that last one.
So it's like, you don't want that guy building, it's a top lot, right?
Yep.
Coming up the road, right? You're saying it's gonna come to about here?
A little bit further.
A little bit further, look, now, you see, you put another building over here? Okay, so, Billy, but Billy's talking about, what is gonna cost for us to get it to here, right? So, and do you read all the distance of that? Is it like fifty feet, if you sat on one of them?
It's a gas.
But, Billy, why would we have to even think about that until?
Well, he designed, he had his engineer design, I believe it was to bring water to this property. He wasn't, but that looking to bring it, uh, three twenty on my plan statement. You know, he did an approach of us as an owner, so. All of that property.
That's why we're doing the seventy five.
Seems to me, we wanna, we wanna run it same time, it's supposed to go. It would be nice to, um, um, spread, yeah, and, you know, for there.
See, I think we should get him where, for the seventy five thousand, um, for him, you gotta reach that property. You know, I think we should try that one first, say, we just wanna be understanding that it is gonna reach our property with seventy five. How does that work, so, I mean, you just put the lightning pack off and that, that, that they go, they need it?
Yeah.
That we all have the gate. And then we connect one of that, bring to the.
The line on the other side of the road that went to flatly, the two hundred, two units.
Yeah.
It ended up fire hydrating. It's a gate and a bar. So flatly, basically, dug the trench. Put the block on. Put the. The pipe at the valve and connect it, and instead of the water main, not their driveway, it's a pipe. And then put the same valve, four hundred.
When you say the block, that's called the ammo block, like when the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where would you guys want it to end for future? Out of the town, but.
Yeah.
Would you want it to end? Well, I think that property actually has the. On that side of the road anyway, you know, I don't see anything going further south. Across from the end of the target box or any of that, I don't think there'll be development there, further down maybe, but.
You mean in between us and Webb, this?
Yes.
Yeah. What is on the other side of the road, is this all residence houses over here?
Yeah. I think the business owners are three twenty one or something. When we start that side.
Yeah.
Up to eighty and, I'll talk to them and see, if it can, can imagine, we can do, say, you know, everything for.
I think you missed some, still, you settled on seven daily, right? He's going five in there for the extra, for incidentals, nothing to do with getting us here, what we left to approach is. You, we go, we tell him. That. For our seventy thousand that we're putting in, we wanna make sure you reach our property. Correct, Bill? And then he's saying, so the extra, in case we have anything else to, we don't wanna give him seventy five and say now bring it there. Cause you're, you're thinking in your head, we're going five thousand to reach there, that's something I think we met, I go.
I'm just thinking, we had a deal that we were putting seventy, to get where he was going to, so. But I think we could talk to him.
But, yeah.
You know.
And say, you know.
Yeah.
I think we should try that.
Their labor rate, you know. So a few thousand at the fight for they do, you know what?
Right. I feel pretty about that, because I still think that if this doesn't go through the fight of combat, we're in the area where we're treating our money. For heaven watching, so, but we went up over that, then it became something, oh shit, you know? And we discussed that, and we agreed about that, right? So I think you guys really could come up with that, and you putting in that money too. And they were pretty happy about your company. About that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it wasn't something that we actually planned to do.
Yeah.
Still on extension, so we did extend the precinct for that purpose to. And we asked the select board to do it. Even that took one or two, just through the boundaries. So it's to go there, being the master, power being, and then us, three meeting process.
So, did we have to, were we, are you gonna, the way to come back to that, you said something about before we make the motion.
They didn't, they didn't make, I don't, they didn't motion. About seventy five or eighty? Up to eighty and then a couple.
It actually is. And then that just got pushed in the case. Right, and that's how we'll expect it.
And authorize the board to execute the agreement, so it shouldn't be a three party agreement. About the time they, they must install.
Still, I mean, more.
Second. That's committed, it's gotta be a vast energy.
Yeah.
Or they would say, I, I. They're gonna offer, I think they're gonna sign it, so.
Not offer, right? Execute the document?
Yeah. Well, you're gonna negotiate, and the rentals will come to us.
Increasing, it's bad. We don't worry here. Too late. With the taxes, so, I, we would have made a lot of money, right?
Have pretty done a lot.
If we got lots, yeah. I, I, that, Gary. Oh, that on top of the drive.
Let's see, what together.
Are we done?
We done the non-publics?
Yep.
Any public input?
I stuck with us, hold on. Prove you a little way, it killed them. You bet, I saw you catching them, you got, been there? You can say it wasn't just a rubber stamp, that was.
Well, I think that the stable's going on. I'm not worried, he's.
Was complaining to your app, like.